Video. I'd like to call the March 7, 2023, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters that are voted on by the Board of Commissioners at our meeting this evening. I want to announce that any members of the public attending the Commissioners' meeting this evening who parked in the county's parking facility or who utilize public transportation to attend the meeting can get validation for your parking or transit passes from one of the officers who's with us this evening. You can see them on the way out, and they can validate that for you. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Do any members of the public have any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we now come to public comment. And we have a sign-in sheet, which one person signed up for. So if any other member, after we ask this person to share their comments, DD-style, any other members of the public who wish to address the board will have an opportunity to do so. You have three minutes to address the board. You'll get an orange light once there's about 30 seconds left, and then a red light when your time's up. And we do ask that you discontinue your comments once your time's up, because we want to give everyone the same amount of time. Thank you for being with us.
As we contemplate the possibilities of wetter rainy times and drier dry times, we might look to the west, where they are already experiencing these trends, to get an idea of how these water experiences may play out for us. Back in the 1930s, the Hoover Dam was built on the Colorado River. That dam impounded enough water to cover the entire state of Connecticut in 10 feet of water. Back then, that seemed like all the water they would ever need, but the people kept coming. And four or five more dams and reservoirs later, they are still running out of water during extended periods of drought. In California, the governor has recently signed an executive order directing state workers to look for places where the soil has good percolation rates, where they can pond up water during rainy times to let it seep down to restore the water table. We are lucky here. We already know where water can soak into the groundwater to keep our streams, creeks, and rivers flowing during dry times. It's the mountain sides all around us, and we already have two reservoirs, but the people keep coming. And the scientists say an experience is beginning to show that the extended droughts will come too. Now, out in the west, they store up most of their water in the snowpack they get in the winter. They get what the weather gives them. They don't have control of that. We store up most of our water in the mountains when it rains, and we can control how much water can be stored up by protecting the mountain sides from impervious surfaces like roads and houses. Every mountainside is a watershed for the creeks and streams that feed our farms and rivers. But these mountainsides can't soak up the rainwater if they are covered with roads and houses. Right now, with the impending crisis that the changing climate may cause, all those watersheds need the same protection as the watershed that fills the Bee Tree and Burnett reservoirs. For the sake of those that come after us, keep development off the steep slopes, at least for a while, until we see what happens with the climate. Now, I know you are probably up there thinking, this issue is more complicated than I'm making it out to be. Believe you me, I know that, but I only have three minutes at a time, so stay tuned. I will get to other parts of this issue in later meetings. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak during public comment? All right. The next item on our agenda, under good news, is about the START program's success and certification, and Stoney Blevins from our Health and Human Services Office is here to explain.
Good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to talk about our sobriety treatment and recovery teams this evening. We did prepare a couple of slides, but really, I just want to express gratitude to the county and for supporting this program. We, in 2017, we came across this opportunity where we learned about sobriety treatment and recovery teams model out of Kentucky, and really just had a vision for what it could be, and asked for some funding in our budget requests. We were awarded that funding, and then we started to build, and we were able to build not one, but two START teams made up of, each team made up of three START social workers and three family mentors. And you may know family mentors more as like peer support specialists. And so these dyads work to support families in our community who are dealing with co-occurring substance use and child malt treatment issues. And so the couple of slides that we've put up here are the National START Model. So since 2017, the START Model went from a model that was in Kentucky, and it's grown to this national model, and it's actually on the clearinghouse for prevention models for child welfare. And so we, in Buncombe County, having had this vision five years ago or so, are the only county in the state of North Carolina that is currently doing START. And the START Model, as this slide kind of walks you through, works to ensure child safety and well-being, prevent and/or decrease out-of-home placements, increase parental recovery, increase parenting capacity and family stability, reduce repeat malt treatment, improve system capacity for addressing parental substance use and child malt treatment. And so we've been able to show those outcomes in our local, with our local teams, and really have seen a lot of success. One of the primary impacts has been a total reduction of the number of children in our foster care system, which, as you know, has a huge ripple effect in our community. So this just walks through the timeline. We have been going through the certification process for the last couple of years. It's not been an easy process. I want to express gratitude for the team that has been working on that, really led by Catherine Watkins. She's here in the audience today. She's the program manager over the team. And our quality assurance teams, I mean, it's really been just a huge effort. Our partnering agencies, Family Preservation Services and October Road, and so just so grateful for all the work that's gone into this process. And then these are just some of the outcomes that we wanted to share with you. So we've been able to serve 146 families, with 67% of those cases closing, with at least one of the parents involved achieving sobriety in their early recovery goals. 72% of the children either not being removed at all or being returned to their parents. And we received exceeded ratings in all 11 areas of the certification process. So very, very proud of that work. And so we do have members of our START team here tonight, and I'd just like to give them the opportunity to stand up and be recognized. Thank you so much.
All right, hey, thank you so much, and thank you all for being with us this evening. And we really appreciate the acknowledgement of this important work, which is obviously just making a really profound difference in the lives of a lot of families and kids. So thank you all for your really important work. All right, the next item is a recognition for some of our other public servants in Buncombe County. I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Jasmine Beach-Ferrar.
Thank you, and we wanted to pause for a moment to lift up some really inspiring news and wonderful recognition that's been received by Buncombe County colleagues. On February 25, our very own Commissioner Al Whitesides and Sheriff Quentin Miller were honored by the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Association of Asheville and Buncombe County. They were among the inaugural recipients of the John Lewis Award, which honors men in our community who have fostered a culture of inclusion in the Asheville community, worked to achieve a just society for the disadvantaged, exemplified a nonviolent philosophy in pursuit of a better life for non-majority people, and inspired direct action in the cause of social justice. Sheriff Miller is out of town traveling for work this evening, but we wanted to take a moment to recognize and celebrate these honors, and also open it up if you'd like to share any thoughts, Commissioner Whiteside. On the same night, two county employees were recognized as this year's recipients of an award from Black Wall Street Asheville's annual awards ceremony. Community Development Specialist Leonard Jones from our CAPE team was recognized with the Community Leader Award, and County Manager Avril Pinder took home the Community History Maker Award. These awards are part of a Black Legacy Month celebration, and they also reflect the incredible impact that both award winners, Leonard and Avril, are having in our community day in and day out, year-round. Would either of you like to make any remarks?
Well, I'd just like to say, I was very humbled to be nominated, and it's just a privilege to serve the community in which I was born and raised, and so just thank you for this recognition.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
County Manager Pinder, would you like to say anything?
I can't top Leonard, so.
Well, a final round of applause for his incredible four colleagues and all they do for our community.
All right, thank you so much, Commissioner. All right, under Presentations, we have a proclamation for Agricultural Awareness Day, and Commissioner Terry Wells will read the proclamation, and Jennifer Harrison is with us as well, and I think Jennifer will receive the proclamation.
And also, if Jackie Gillespie and Anna Reeves will come up. Jackie Gillespie is with our Buncombe County Farm Bureau Women. She's the chair, and Anna Reeves is the president of Owen FFA.
Great.
County of Buncombe Proclamation, Agriculture Awareness Day. Whereas March 21, 2023, has been designated as National Agriculture Day to remind the public of the importance of agriculture to everyone, and whereas Buncombe County has more than 1,000 farms and more than 72,000 acres of farmland, which produce almost $50 million in cash receipts in Buncombe County. And whereas the Buncombe County Commissioners have recognized the importance of preserving farmland in the county through its support and funding of the Farmland Preservation Program, which helps preserve production farms and open space in Buncombe County, and contributes to the economic health and environmental well-being of Buncombe County. And whereas the Buncombe County Commissioners and Buncombe County residents support open space and farmland preservation through the adoption of the Open Space Bond Referendum, in part to permanently conserve farmland for continued production into perpetuity. And whereas the Buncombe County Commissioners continue to support the establishment of conservation easements on the county's highest-quality farmland, and empower the Buncombe County Soil and Water Conservation District to hold these easements and annually monitor them to ensure no further development occurs. And whereas the Buncombe County Commissioners understand the important role Buncombe County farmers and agriculture contribute to maintaining a strong economic base in Buncombe County. And whereas the Buncombe County Commissioners recognize the Buncombe County farmers produce safe, affordable, and abundant food and fiber products that are used and consumed by Buncombe County citizens every day. Whereas the Buncombe County Commissioners desire to recognize the vital role of agriculture and the unique and irreplaceable value that farmers, foresters, and other agriculture stewards bring to Buncombe County. Now therefore, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners hereby resolves and declares March 21, 2023 as Buncombe County Ag Awareness Day. Signed this 7th day of March, Brownie Newman, Chair of Buncombe County Commissioners. And before I hand this over to Jackie, I just want to say, I went to the Owen FFA banquet the other week, and if you want to be inspired, definitely attend one of our FFA banquets. These young people are amazing leaders. They are doing a tremendous job, and there's an FFA in every single public high school, Asheville and Buncombe. So definitely find out more about that and get involved, because they're very impressive, and it will, it'll do your heart good.
Good evening. Thank you all for having us up here. I just want to thank Terry for sponsoring us and for you guys for the proclamation. I think all of you know me and know how important agriculture is to me, and we're just thankful that you guys recognize that. Anna's with us tonight, and she's handing out just a little fact sheet, because one of the things our women's group does is we try to educate where we can and advocate for agriculture, so I always try to bring you a little bit of information that maybe you didn't know or something new. I had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago, it was National FFA Week, so we looked for opportunities to go into all the high schools and meet with their FFA chapters. We did that at Irwin, Owen, and Inca in North Buncombe. We went to an actual chapter meeting, spoke with the kids. We were over at Asheville High. Natalie and I went over and visited at Asheville High with their garden club. We went to the Owen banquet, met with the teacher out at Reynolds. TC Robertson has a UAG teacher, communicated with him, was not able to get into the school that week, but he is interested in having us come back. And as you know, Farm Bureau, we offer some local county scholarships, so that's information we passed on to the kids. I did tell the kids at Asheville High, I knew their principal had agriculture background, and I was sure if they needed anything else, just to go see him and that he'd be willing to help them out with that. But it was, it was great to get in and see the kids and see their dedication and their support to agriculture. And again, we just thank you for all that you do to support. We want to thank you and acknowledge that the bond, the $30 million bond that went on the ballot this past year, and, and ask that you please remember, while all green space is important, that you especially remember the farmland and the working farms when you allocate that money. And we did bring, you know, our jar last year of our Century Farms, and I am pleased to announce that we have three samples to add. We have three new farms going to the Century Farm Program this year, so we'll be adding those out to the jar when we leave. But again, thank you all.
All right, thank you, great job. All right, Commissioners, coming up next, we hold a public hearing regarding the proposed Mount Carmel rezoning request. And so Shannon Capazali, sorry, I hope I'm not butchering that too bad, is here to help us out with this item. Thanks for being here, Shannon.
Thank you. So this is the review of ZPH 2022, number 40, the Mount Carmel rezoning. And I have a very brief PowerPoint. There we go. The public hearing was notified, the public was notified of this hearing on the following dates shown on the slide, and that included a notice in the Asheville Citizen Times, paper notices mailed to property owners within 1,000 feet of the subject parcel, a physical sign posted to the site, and a notice on the county's website. The applicant and the owner of the property is Clyde Motley of Locust Grove MHP LLC, and he is here tonight. The property is located at 31 Mount Carmel Place. The total size is 1.1 acres, and the current use is a single-family residence. So the development will be served by public water and sewer, and you can see an aerial of the parcel there with the star in the middle of it. The owner requests to rezone one parcel from R1 Residential to R3 Residential. The slide shows the current zoning map on the left and what the map would look like after the rezoning, if approved. Compared to the existing R1 district, rezoning the property to R3 would allow for smaller lot sizes when served by public sewer, increase the density from 10 units an acre to 12 units an acre, allow for additional types of uses in the permitted use table of the zoning ordinance. For example, manufactured home parks are in allowed use in R3, but not in the current R1 district. The surrounding development patterns in the immediate area include an existing manufactured home park and single-family residential units, as shown with the arrows on this aerial map with the zoning turned on. And the planning board held a public hearing on January 23, 2023, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval of the rezoning request. I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any for staff. And again, Mr. Motley is here as well.
Thanks, Shannon. Commissioners, are there any questions at this time? All right, if not, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing at 5:26 PM. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak during the public hearing? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at 5:27 PM. Commissioners, any questions? And is there a proposed motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning request from R1 to R3.
Second.
Okay. And Mr. Free, is that all we need to do to accomplish this? Just the one motion?
With the 160D, it's all encompassing, so as presented in the agenda packet, you're good to go.
Great, all right, very good. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, the next item is the county manager's report. Ms. Pinder, do you have any items?
No reports, sir.
Okay, and we have no old business, so moving to new business, the next item is a resolution approving the financing improvements to the Asheville Regional Airport with the proceeds of taxes and bonds to be issued by the Greater Asheville Regional Airport Authority. Michael Free, senior staff attorney, will explain this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, about a year ago, the Greater Asheville Regional Airport Authority asked this board and the Henderson County Board of Commissioners to approve its first set of bond approvals. That was $185 million. We got Mike Reisman here, if there's any questions for this, but this is the second tranche, $175 million for expanding and modernizing the terminal, expansion of the lobby and ticket and TSA areas, and other new air traffic control improvements. This, the IRS requires a hearing where each local government is hosting such a bond issuance, and we just recommend that this board approve the agenda packet as presented. And I'll point out that there's no responsibility whatsoever for the county or liability of the county for the issue of the bonds. That rests solely with the Airport Authority.
All right, thank you. No, but we don't need to hold a public hearing on this.
No, the Airport Authority held a public.
We just need to vote to approve the resolution.
Yes, that's all. Yes, sir.
Great. All right, great.
I move that we approve the resolution.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, resolution's approved. Thanks for being here, appreciate it. Next is consideration of a resolution approving the agreement for additional opioid settlement funds and authorizing staff to execute the settlement paperwork, and Michael Free will also present this item.
Yes, sir. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. It's been about two years since this board approved the MOA regarding the first opioid settlement of funds. That agreement was $16 million, that's coming to the county, $16,177,777. That was a settlement by the Big Three and Johnson &amp; Johnson Company. This was in addition to the lawsuit that the county filed, along with many other local governments, several years back. And this one was against the pharmacies, Teva, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart. This is what is being termed as the Wave II settlements. It incorporates and uses the same framework for the memorandum of agreement. And this settlement package is over 15 years, $12,949,951. This is additional money coming to the county under the same terms and conditions. It's being recommended to the county by the Attorney General, as well as our National Consortium of Attorneys. The alternative would be to say no, in which case it would be just cost prohibitive for the county to proceed alone, to do the discovery, and try to prosecute and get awarded any further damages. So I would recommend that the board approve this as presented and authorize the county manager to execute the settlement documents. There's one overall for the amendment to the memorandum of understanding, and then one each with each of those five pharmacies. And I know that Commissioner Beach-Ferrar knows about, more about how this settlement process works, so I'll open it up.
Thank you very much. Just briefly, a few notes on this. Again, this, being at this juncture is sort of the reflection of many, many years of hard work from many different folks, and I think we can all be proud that Buncombe County has been a leader within the state in terms of being engaged in the litigation, and also in terms of developing the kinds of services and programs that are truly making a difference in saving people's lives. And like we heard from the START program tonight, helping families stay together, improving outcomes, not just for folks in recovery, but for entire families. And what this represents is an opportunity for us to do more of that work moving forward. As with the first sort of authorization process we went through in the first settlement, this will be triggered when all eligible communities in North Carolina sign on. So I believe that Buncombe will be one of the first to pass one of these resolutions in this wave, which is fantastic and sort of helps get the flywheel moving. NCACC is doing, or North Carolina Association of County Commissions is doing an amazing job, working with communities across the state to make sure folks have the support they need as they assess this. But we are certainly hopeful that, just as with the first settlement, there will be a smooth process to getting to full sign-on and triggering the release of this, with the first payout of funding being expected to come in late 2023 calendar year. This also happens, I think, at a, perhaps we could say serendipitous, time, because as we are tracking local data, particularly around overdose deaths, we are seeing some alarming increases in the number of folks who are dying. So even as incredible impactful work is happening to prevent overdoses and deaths, we are still seeing record numbers of folks actually dying from overdoses within Buncombe County, and have been working with Commissioner Moore and Commissioner Sloan and staff, and have talked to the Commissioners about some content we'll be bringing to the March 21 briefing that shares some updated data and takes a deep dive on what we're seeing locally. And also And also shares some ideas that are being developed around how we can have some very targeted, precise responses to the specific goal of reducing overdose deaths, which of course is one goal among many, but one that I think rises to the top of the list as we move forward, because we're seeing those numbers move in exactly the wrong direction that we'd want them to. So that's sort of the only framing remarks I had, but just appreciate once again that, in every step of this work, it feels like folks in Buncombe County are ready to be out front and helping, set the pace and helping support and encourage other communities to do this with us.
All right, thanks, Commissioner. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, great. The next item on the agenda is consideration of additional research capacity for the Community Reparations Commission, and Matt Baker from Strategy and Innovation will present this item.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. The request that we're putting forward here is to provide just that, more comprehensive support for the Joint Asheville-Buncombe Community Reparations Commission. This will be in the form of providing additional time-limited research capacity for Buncombe County Special Collections. The plan for this year is to provide $18,000 roughly to be transferred from the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Budget to the Buncombe County Library's budget to provide for that, and then funds for subsequent time will flow through the normal budgetary process.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Is there a motion to approve the proposal?
So moved. Second.
Further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. The next item is consideration of a budget amendment for purchase of 111 Victoria Road property. And John Hudson, our Budget Director, is here, along with Dirk Wilmuth, the AB, from AB Tech, to present this item. And I think I see the President of AB Tech with us as well. Thank you all for being with us.
Good evening. This amendment will appropriate Article 46 sales tax revenue for the purchase and renovation of 111 Victoria Road. And Dirk Wilmuth is here for AB Tech to discuss this in detail.
Well, President John Gossip to open up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to let you know that this is a project that really began over 15 years ago with Ray Bailey, who had talked to the surgeons and the owners of that property. We had worked with them, they presented a proposal. Our Board of Trustees chose to pass on that about a year ago. The owners then sold it to a developer who then readdressed it with us. It became a much more attractive project for us, and Dirk is going to give you the details.
All right, briefly here. This property is at 111 Victoria Road. It is surrounded on three sides by college property, including, as shown, the Ferguson Center for Allied Health and Workforce Development on the north and east, and then on the south side, the Hemlock Building along Oakland Road. It is a 2.67-acre tract zone institutional and includes a vacant two-story building, office, building that was an office, medical office, that has 10,246 square feet, built in 1978. The assessed value for Buncombe County purposes is a total of just under $2 million, based on 2020, 2021 assessments. It was privately appraised at $2.76 million in April of 2021. And Buncombe County General Services kindly did an assessment of the building in February of 2022 and determined that $1.1 million at that time will be required to renovate the building and put it into a usable format. So between the $2.7 million appraisal value and the $1.4, as well as the inclination of the owner at that time to want to charge more based on the fact that the appraisal was now two years old, we more or less turned away from it at the time. However, oops, we now have the opportunity to work with the developer who will purchase the property, demolish the building, put a fence around the pad there, and prepare the parcel for use by the college with 134 spaces for parking until some future time when we can determine a building need, a future building need. So it seems like a good opportunity to pursue it at this point. The map here, which is difficult to read, shows that the building up at the front, being fenced off, there would be a tie-in to the property at Allied Health with a ramp going up to that area, which is a little higher, it's a higher, excuse me, elevation. The rear of the property is now a fairly steep incline, and so they would fill that area and be able to extend parking out into that area. There is an existing sewer line, that's a private sewer line, to the college that will need to be relocated, whether we purchase it or not. So what we're proposing, oops, may have gone too far. The developer, his concept is that the cost will be between $4.4 and $4.75 million. That would include the acquisition of the land, the demolition of the existing building, fencing around the building site. That would also tie in, as I said, to the other parcels at the college. We would have, let's see, pricing includes work that will have to be done with the city of Asheville in order to provide for the fill area, as well as the displacement of some trees and whatnot. And it does not include any cost related to the existing private sewer line, which is a college matter that will have to be dealt with separately. And that amount would include all design permitting, legal, real estate, development-related fees. And we are asking that the commission approve allocating $5 million, no more than $5 million for the total cost, because we're not exactly sure what it's going to be, but we would have to come back and get more if it's more than that. So we do have a $225,000 contingency built into that. The Buncombe County, or excuse me, the college trustees approved this concept on February the 9th, and the Joint Capital Advisory Commission, or Committee, approved it on February the 16th. So it's now coming to you, and then ultimately you would have to go to the State Board of Community Colleges for approval, and it's April meeting if you approve. So are there any questions?
I don't think so. Good job presenting all the information.
Thank you.
I don't think we have any. Commissioners, is there a motion?
So move. Second.
All right, there's a motion and second to approve the proposed budget amendment for purchase and associated work for capital improvements at 111 Victoria Road property. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you, Dr. Gossip, thank you, Dirk, appreciate you. All right, next item is a budget amendment for NCEM Stream Restoration and Stabilization Grant Award.
North Carolina Emergency Management is providing $2 million to help address debris in streams and rivers left by Tropical Storm Fred. These funds will be used in conjunction with other funding from the Emergency Watershed Program received last year to contract for professional services to alleviate these issues. Funding may be used until June 30th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Right, thank you, John, and we have one other proposed budget amendment regarding the Affordable Housing Feasibility Study Phase 2.
So this amendment realizes affordable housing program income of $151,000, along with $29,000 of prior-year project dollars, for a total of $180,000 to finance Phase 2 of the Development Finance Initiative, DFI, Affordable Housing Feasibility Study. And Matt Cables here to discuss this in detail.
Good evening, Commissioners. The request, as John indicated, is for a $180,000 budget amendment. This will require no additional county funds. We'll be reallocating prior-year unspent and existing over-realized program income. The purpose of the funding is to provide site planning expertise from architects or engineers, site preparation work, including surveys, soil samples, environmental testing, and the like. We are also requesting the identification of up to three of the sites. If you'll recall, when DFI presented at your last briefing in February, they identified four potential sites. We're seeking your feedback and identification of three of those sites. They are the sites reflected on this slide. The Cox Avenue sites, which is comprised of 50 and 52, the Valley Street site, and the Woodfinne site, those were all identified as the downtown properties. And so they're in that kind of lighter orange. And some limited details about the potential test fits are reflected there to the side of each of the photographs. And then the Irwin Hills Road site, which was identified through DFI's process, which is not located in the downtown area, but was identified as a potential 4% site. And so we are requesting approval of the budget amendment as well as a selection of up to three sites to move into Phase 2.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Commissioners, any questions?
If not, I move to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $180,000.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second to approve the budget amendment. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, the budget amendment passes, and I'll make a motion that we give direction to staff that we would like to focus on the Cox Avenue, Valley Street, and Irwin Hills Road properties as the next focus for the redevelopment of county and properties at this time.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you, thank you both, appreciate it. Okay. Commissioners, we have a couple of board appointments. First, on the Health and Human Services Board, we have one appointment. I will recommend that we appoint Richard Needleman. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And on the Downtown Commission, we have one reappointment. Recommend we reappoint Brian Moffett. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, Commissioners, that includes all of, concludes all of our board appointments. We do have a couple of announcements. On March 21st at 3:00 PM, the County Commissioners will hold their briefing meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. On March 21st at 5:00 PM, the Commissioners will hold their regular meeting at 200 College Street in downtown Asheville.
March 14th, we have a budget work session at 8:30 in the morning right here in 326, 34.
In downtown Asheville.
Downtown Asheville.
All right, Mr. Joyner, anything else we need to make note of? All right, is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed or adjourned?